We're going to have to give us a few minutes and try to keep the conversation down while we finish our. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion that we go back into open session.
Second. Motion by Councilman Lamore to go back into open session. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Ego Angelie, Vining.
Yes.
Germaine.
Yes.
Lomore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
And we need a motion to adjourn the special meeting.
Motion to adjourn the special meeting.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Lamore, supported by Councilman Felder, to adjourn the special meeting. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Ego Angelie.
Yes.
Vining.
Yes.
Germaine.
Yes.
Lomore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Okay, this time, we'll call the city council meeting to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Ego Angelie.
Present.
Vining.
Here.
Germaine.
Here.
Lomore.
Here.
Felder.
Here.
Whitman.
She's excused.
Mayor Clark.
Present. Clerk, next item.
Next item will be the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Yes, would please all stand for the invocation. Remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
We have faith and hope in each other and our form of government. We ask for your guidance in the decisions that are made here this evening. We ask you to work for the welfare of this community and all who call it home.
I pledge allegiance.
To the full. United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So the next item on the agenda is the approval of the regular agenda.
First, I'll ask if there's any amendments or changes to the agenda. Mr. Pestoo, council members? Not, we need a motion to approve the regular agenda.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion that we approve the regular agenda.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Ego Angelie, supported by Councilman Lamore, to accept the approval of the regular agenda. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Ego Angelie.
Yes.
Vining.
Yes.
Germaine.
Yes.
Lomore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Next item.
The next item is the consent agenda and for approval of payments, which is item B, it should read $499,724.38.
Thank you. Are there any items on the consent agenda that council wishes to have pulled for further discussion? Any consent agenda items? See, Your Honor, are there any items on the consent agenda those present here this evening wish to have pulled for further discussion? See, none. A motion regarding the consent agenda. Councilman Felder.
I'd make a motion that all items on the consent agenda be accepted, placed on file, recommendations carried out, and resolutions adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Felder, supported by Councilman Lomore, that the consent agenda, all items be accepted, placed on file, recommendations carried out, and resolutions adopted. Clerk, please call the roll.
Ego Angelie.
Yes.
Vining.
Yes.
Germaine.
Yes.
Lomore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
Next item, please.
The next item is under council action, item 3226, resolution to terminate Custer Monument Community Engagement Facilitation Project.
Mr. Pestoo to begin, see if there's any comments. There's a resolution on tonight's agenda for council action. Mr. Pestoo, any comments or introduction?
Nothing more, Your Honor, than the resolution there would just terminate the project that was initiated several months ago.
Okay, as we stated, or as Mr. Pestoo stated, the resolution that which is presented there is up for council action. I'll see if there's any comments from council to begin with or any motions. Council comments regarding this? Motion?
Motion.
Councilman Lamore?
So I can make a motion to terminate the Custer Monument Community Engagement slash Facilitation Project.
One second.
A motion by Councilman Lamore, supported by Councilwoman Germaine, regarding item 3226, the resolution to terminate Custer Monument Community Engagement Facilitation Project. I'll take any comments from council at this time. Oh, sure enough, Councilwoman Vining.
The determination of, of the proposed termination of this engage, community engagement and facilitation project, did you have something, did we have something in mind where we'd actually have community engagement? Or are we saying that we just want to step away from the whole thing and let the issue die or fall flat? What is, what does this mean to terminate this project? Is it, is it just with these specific people who responded to the RFQ or is this?
No, there's really nothing beyond what the final, where our action items on there is to terminate the project with the consultant that we were working with to put together a proposal. We never got to that point of having a formal proposal presented to council. And then also, the second part terminates any use of any city funds toward the project itself. So those were the two things related to them.
Councilman, if I might, I guess this is, as I look at this as a resolution, it talks in the timeline of how we got to where we were through the process of, I'll just, I'll go right to where the requests for the qualifications were sent out, or received information from four, where there was a presentation at a previous meeting from a facilitator that was being recommended. And then in our last meetings, there was discussion. And from that, it's that we're not going to pursue, as I read this, going to pursue, continue with that process of entertaining the four that were sent. And as it says, ordered to halt further efforts to procure a neutral third-party facilitator. And the last item, of course, is not to allocate general funds toward the removal or relocation of the Custer statue. So I think your question, Councilwoman, is, is what, what comes next? And that's not the action we're doing this evening. I would think that if council wants to take other conversation in the future after tonight, that's available regarding if there's other thoughts of moving forward will come after this evening.
Yep, Councilman Ego Angelie, you have a comment or a question?
Thank you, Your Honor. As part of the resolution, I just wanted to state, I guess, my, my observations. The first is, I'm in favor of the resolution, but not because of the lack of transparency on the selection of the consultant. As we talked about two weeks ago, the process that the city used by having a committee of the manager, the economic development director, the mayor, the representative from the director museum, and the chairman of the Monroe County Historical Commission, I think was appropriate. To me, there was no lack of transparency. That's a process that's used to select consultants on a professional basis. I can use, for an example, one that I forgot to mention, but I mentioned it to the city manager after the meeting. Many of you know that I own a consulting business. About two months ago, my firm put in a proposal to the Gun Lake Tribe, which owns property over in the Wayland area. They run the Gun Lakes Casino. Our firm was invited by them to put a proposal together to develop a bridge with a series of pedestrian improvements. We were one of four firms that were asked to put a proposal in, in which we did. We were notified two weeks after we put the proposal in that their committee, which was internal, decided that all four firms were qualified, but our firm was not selected because our cost was higher and our timeframe was a little bit more elongated. Their administrative staff, much like ours, tribal members within their administrative structure, reviewed the proposals internally. They did not interview any of the consulting firms as part of that decision-making process. That is standard in the private consulting business. So to infer that the city administration was not transparent is wrong. The reason why I support the petition is based on the number of meetings that we've had, both in terms of Zoom during COVID and the meetings that we've had after COVID. It became very apparent to me that the city council was putting itself in a position of a no-win scenario. We could spend a number of taxpayers' dollars on a facilitator, and regardless of how that process came out, the city council would be no better off than what we were when we started. Because either one side was going to be upset, or in the case of two weeks ago, both sides were upset with, with the outcome. So I'm under the, my position is I don't want to put the city council or the city into a position where we're spending taxpayers' dollars, and what the results are going to be, no one is going to accept the results. Because there's going to be one side that doesn't get everything that they want. Fundamentally, I guess, as I've been through the process, the mayor and I, at the very beginning, had suggested that we understand that the Custer statue is controversial. He was controversial in the 1800s, and he's controversial in the 21st century. The issue here is making an interpretation in terms of what Custer's legacy is. And that could be done, and the mayor and I had talked about it at the very beginning of this process, through a series of interpretation panels that would be placed on the plaza so people could read from Custer's boyhood years in Monroe to his death at the Little Big Horn. And do it in a fair and appropriate way that also recognized the impact that he had on Native American tribes. Locally, one of the things that we forget as part of history, history should not be hidden, but it should be learned upon. Just down the road, over at the Riveraisen Battlefield, back in 1815, or excuse me, 1813 in January, there was a battle there between American forces, Native American Indians, and the British. After the conclusion of that meeting, that confrontation, around 60 American militia that were seriously wounded were told by the British that they would have safe quarter and they could stay in the settlement. The day after, the 60 wounded Americans were visited by a band of Wyandotte Indians that proceeded to take those that could walk as prisoners, and the other ones, they were killed. Now, I'm not comparing what Custer did out West to what happened in Monroe, but if you take a look at the Monroe Experience, if you've visited the visitor's center, they don't hide the fact of that engagement. They explain it, and they explain its historical context. In Germany, they didn't demolish the concentration camps. They're still there. Why are they there? It's to show and remind us of the horror that happened in World War II. So we don't hide history. We need to learn from it. We need to explain it. And that's the reason why I'm voting for this resolution. We have to put the city in a position where regardless of what we do in spending taxpayers' dollars, it's going, it's a no-win scenario based on this controversy. And I don't think the Custer controversy is going to end today. It's probably going to be here another 50 or 100 years from now. So thanks, thank you, Your Honor, for allowing me that opportunity.
Thank you. I may have a comment as well. First, see if there's other council members that wish to make any comments at this time. So I guess I'll follow up then regarding Councilman Michael Angelis and his correct the conversation, seeing I and other council members have had since the beginning is how do we tell all stories? I'll go, I'll start at the end and come back to where I was going to start. When you look at the National Park Service model, it is about telling all stories in totality. And those who visit make their own interpretation of what they want to when they leave. And when they depart, they will take all that they've seen, read, heard, and then have a voice to what they feel may be appropriate. National Park isn't going to tell you what to think, isn't going to tell you what you should take away. They'll tell you all stories, and I think that's a comment that I've said from the beginning. So just to review this process over the past weeks and months, and it kind of culminated at the last meeting, you know, there were, there were comments that clearly showed that there was not support or comfort in moving forward when the item is called what we did, and I thought we did exactly the way an RFP and RFQ should go in the process. The, those four facilitators and their proposals was placed on the city's website and available for view. Anybody could have looked and made their determinations whether there should be interviews or not, but as Councilman Ego Angelie said, not all proposals get interviews because if the, that's the point to make the best foot forward at the start, not later when you think you might be able to persuade through that. And that's why they went the way they did with the committee. So besides that comment, we also heard that they don't have faith in the process. Well, I think we have been transparent and put things out. It's, it's been available. Yet it didn't seem to be timely enough for, for some of the comments when, you know, you know, are the interviews done correctly? Were there, why weren't there? Well, if you're not going to interview, your timeline isn't going to match what you put down because it should be fluid. Then it was, whether it was viewed legitimately. Was it legitimate? If it's not, then there's going to be problems. So I think what happens there is if that's what your start point is, if it doesn't match exactly what somebody is looking for, then there's space for them to say it didn't go correctly and it wasn't done in fairness or transparency or legitimate. Or that the, you know, that it was, didn't have faith in the process. So that's why I'm going to support it as well, because I think there's still the opportunity in the future, but we need to, to manage that in a fashion as was stated. Other comments from council? So as we usually do, and I think I'm, and I think council is fair, I think that we welcome comments from people, but this is action for the council this evening. So if there are comments from those present here this evening, just as we have at the end, regarding specifically to this, be mindful of the time of every, all that are here. Now, the rules of the chambers are of speaking no more than three minutes, and we're going to, and when you speak, you speak to the council as a whole. It's not a reference to other people, what other people may say, or what they might believe. We don't clap, we don't cheer, we don't boo. This is a formal process to hear people's voice regarding this item before we take, goes to the council for a motion. But, and I'll ask as you step forward, your name and address, jurisdiction where you reside. We used to ask the address, but we're good with where the jurisdiction in which you reside. I'm looking at clerk, see if I missed any of the other items at the top. I don't.
No, it's, but it is the preference of the, I'm sorry.
Yep.
The preference that they indicate Monroe Township, Frenchtown Township, City of Monroe, as opposed to just saying Monroe, given the, the way our county is set up.
Right. And I always say, people say, I live in Monroe, and I find out, you know, they start talking, they're, they're in another area of Monroe, because it's just a general term which I know what we chat here, but for this reason, it does make a difference of, of knowing that information. So again, if you wish to speak, be, I'll just say, mindful of the time, respectful, and speak to the council.
Your Honor, I just have a question of the chair. Are we holding off on voting on the resolution until after public comment or taking it before?
No, I'd like to hear what the public has to say. I think we've heard from two council members. There's others here that haven't spoken yet.
I agree.
And while I have my support, I always liked, I also wanted to hear what people have to say regarding what that might be, and then we'll take, from there, we'll take a vote. So, any comments from those present this evening regarding this item on the agenda, which is a resolution to terminate the Custer Monument Community Engagement Facilitation Project as stated? Yes, well, he just raised his hand. Sir, if you'd wait and go second, I'll let the gentleman, please step forward. And the microphone is a little bit distant, so make sure you speak up. Please, thank you. Your name?
My name's Stephen Meyer. I live in the first precinct here in the city Monroe. And my first time ever speaking to the city council was on April 5th, on the same day that you voted on this committee for the RFQ. And at the time, I thought, one of the city council members asked a great question, Councilmember Felder, which was, why can't we handle this as a city council? And then in response to that, the city manager said, I can quote exactly, he said, gee, can five white guys handle this? And the answer is probably not. I mean, there has to be somebody that is going to be recognized as impartial and actually has what I would call the skill set in dealing with public engagement. And, and I'm amazed that the city council would have accepted that as like a, a good reasoning because I don't think it really addressed council member who asked the original question, why can't the city council handle this themselves? Because when you look at the, the duties of the mayor and the city council on the city website, it says they exclusively hold and exercise all policy-forming and legislative functions in all powers and rights relative to control of city property. And that's what the statue is. It's city property. And then in addition to that, they study problems, review alternatives, and determine the best course of public policy. And again, that seems pertinent to this issue of the statue. And then lastly, they're responsible for the arbitration of conflicting interests, which sometimes arise during the course of conducting city business. Absolutely pertinent to what we're dealing with. And so I feel like originally, when the city council voted on this RFQ, they were foregoing their duties as city council to resolve this. And so I hope, and it sounds like I think everybody, I think it's going to go, you're going to dissolve this RFQ thing, that I'd like to hear some commitment that you'll step up and actually make a decision on the statue, because that's your duty as city council. This is city property. Unless somebody can correct me, like, is this statue not city property? I mean, otherwise, like, what has all this been, you know? And lastly, also, I mean, like, the tens of thousands of dollars that were going to be going into this and grants or whatever that they were going to be seeking, like, our vaccination rate in the city is terrible, and, and I know you're getting, like, the American Rescue, like, $11 million or something like that toward, like, I hope, like, you, like, really use that money and use city resources toward, and I think in the private session, you, you talked about this, you're going to be doing, like, city improvement stuff. So like, just make a decision, like, go on the record. It seemed like the city council was maybe afraid to go on the record as, like, favoring or not favoring the Custer statue, and I hope that you all, like, recognize this is your responsibility and, like, speedily make a decision. I don't know, like, what else you needed to know to make a decision, you have three minutes or whatever.
You're about there. I started late, so I know you're close, and I thought, well, at a minute forty-five, I'm sure you were there. So that's, I started late. I should have hit the button. Thank you for your comments, Steve. Yes, sir. Name, address, jurisdiction. My name is Matthew Switlick. I'm a resident of the city of Monroe at, on East Elm Avenue. And I have with me a, a resolution adopted several days ago by the Monroe County Historical Society Board of Directors. I would like to read it. A resolution by the Board of Directors, Monroe County Historical Society. Whereas since 1910, the citizens of Monroe, Michigan willingly wanted, accepted, and maintained the equestrian monument titled Sighting the Enemy, commemorating the service of General George A. Custer and his Michigan Cavalry Brigade at Gettysburg, Pennsylvania on July 3rd, 1863. And whereas, this contribution to the success of Union arms in that struggle was a significant contribution to the dissolution of slavery in the United States. And whereas certain political movements of recent origin wished to see the Custer statue in Monroe removed from public view on the pretext that George Custer was, in his military service, quote, "a racist" and was guilty of, quote, "genocide", as defined by their own 21st century viewpoint. And whereas the historical record
And whereas the historical record clearly indicates that actions by George Custer were performed within the context of U.S. Army military policy and orders and consistent with general public policy over the 100-year period prior to his death in 1876. And whereas in point of fact, General Custer's own writings show no malice toward his enemies, racial or otherwise, and in fact, he testified twice before Congress, once on behalf of freed African-Americans and Native Americans, and a second time with Native Americans, on behalf of Native Americans against certain other U.S. government agencies, and that was shortly before his death at some risk to his own career. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Directors of the Monroe County Historical Society encourage the city of Monroe, who is entrusted with the care and protection of the Custer statue, to exercise caution in selecting personnel who are to be charged with advising the city on matters relating to the Custer statue, and that such personnel be thoroughly vetted in matters of historical objectivity.
Thank you.
Copies will be provided.
If you have one, you can provide it to the clerk, and the clerk will see that the council members get it and through our dissemination following. Other comments from most, yes, sir. Please come forward. Name, address, the jurisdiction where you reside. If you have something, please give it to the clerk.
Yeah. Originals.
In your three minutes.
Your Honor and city council members, my name is David Engel. I live in Temperance, Michigan, though I was born and bred in Monroe. I'm a member of the Board of Directors of the Monroe County Historical Society. I'm also commander of the Nash Hodges Camp 43, Sons of Union Veterans of the Civil War. And I am co-author of the book Michigan Civil War Landmarks, which covers Michigan's Civil War monuments. George Custer's contributions to the country were significant. The Custer statue is a Civil War monument to be proud of, conceived and created by the Michigan Cavalry Brigade Association, whose members sacrificed so much to preserve the Union and abolish slavery, financed by the state, just like those representing Michigan regiments at national Civil War battlefields such as Gettysburg. Can you imagine the outrage of moving or destroying those monuments? The statue was given by the state to the city of Monroe to display, care for, and protect forever, from generations to generations. If given up, it's gone forever. And so is our opportunity to learn and improve from the history it represents. Not to mention the enormous cost involved, as well as the lost heritage tourism dollars. The recent Juneteenth holiday has a familiar connection. General Custer was sent to Texas in 1865, two months after the Juneteenth decree was read to help and protect the recently freed African-American slaves. He even testified to Congress on how we must protect them, and they are our friends. He testified supporting Native Americans in 1876 and wrote about his admiration of them. Custer even avoided conflicts and tried to help their plight. Racist? Not by the historical facts of his actions. Lieutenant Colonel Custer did not determine the nation's Indian policy. It was the United States government. Now, just what numbers of Native Americans killed constitute genocide? Thousands? On the back of this sheet and in your packets are actual numbers of Native Americans killed by the Seventh Cavalry under Custer's command and Custer's men killed by Native Americans. The native numbers are from the National Park Service, supplied and confirmed by the actual tribal ancestors of those involved.
Mr. Engel, your three minutes if you make your final statement.
Not to condone them, but they are not even minutely genocidal.
Thank you.
Would you like to, would you like?
No. I wanna be fair to everybody that wants to speak in your time.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
I appreciate the information.
Okay. It's in your packet.
Thank you. And of course, I, I'll follow up because the clerk knows, clerk, if you wanted, just items that come into the, the council of how, what then the process is for those that may want to finish reading this.
One copy will be date stamped and kept in perpetuity with the permanent records here in the city, and the remainder will be disseminated to each council person. So everyone will get the copy of anything that's presented to me in this, in this meeting, or anything that's emailed to me, which there are no comments that have been emailed to me, by the way, Your Honor. Just so you know.
Thank you. Just so when you think, well, I wanna hear the rest, there's a way in which that can be done through the clerk's office and the posting those. Other comments from those present here this evening? Well, there's two, I'll just start. Yes, sir. Yeah, name, address, and jurisdiction of residence.
Hello, Cody Crutchfield. I live on South Combe Street in downtown Monroe. I'd like to speak to some of the, let's see, conflicts about how to understand General Custer's legacy. In the grounds of racism, it's difficult to judge based on my standards, especially when people argue about the definition of racist. See, I would like to recommend a source to people here, and that would be Custer's Trials by the author TJ Stiles, who visited the Yells Library a couple of years ago and wrote a biography on General Custer. And it's important to understand the nuances of the politics of racism at the time. And Custer admitted himself that he was against slavery, but he was not entirely in favor of the enfranchisement of African-Americans. He believed that African-Americans should be mustered out of the army after the Civil War and put to farm work, which he thought is what their natural status was and allowed them to. He also had sympathy for Native Americans. He did not hold some of the fervent racist ideas that many people did at the time. He still did endure some of the ideas of the noble savage myth, though. And regardless of his opinions, he did engage in an unjust war against Native Americans. He did follow orders, as it was, by the U.S. Army, but that does not make his actions any less immoral. I believe that I agree with what you said before about educating history and following models that have been done similar in countries like Germany. I'm afraid, though, that the presence of the statue itself has not lent too much understanding or education because I find that a lot of the things that I learned from that book are not generally understood by most people. So I believe that it is important to reform the way that the statue is presented in public in order to provide a greater objective understanding of Custer's legacy. And we need to understand that history is not black and white. People are not good or evil. And we need to understand why, see, people did what they did and what impact it had for the generations afterwards. And I believe that's important, given the history of General Custer and the statue here in Monroe. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Yes. Cole?
Hello, my name is.
I know. I just wanna make sure somebody else doesn't jump up and, you know, somebody's coming.
No, apologies. Okay, so Cole Bean, City of Monroe. I just wanna say, I recognize that as someone who speaks at every meeting and not just this one, my words not, may not carry the same weight as my words once did. But I feel compelled to seek understanding and urge moral action. From the very start in June of 2020, nearly every council member stated, including the mayor and the city manager, that the, the statue and Custer's representation throughout Monroe was not only important to get right, but also paramount to our future as a city. Nearly everyone said something to the effect of, we understand that the ways things currently are, it just isn't enough to explain the whole story. We have generations of Monroe citizens who honor Custer's achievement without grasping the full weight of his offenses. And they are unwilling to understand how honoring his legacy continues to affect minoritized people today. Do you really think a plaque readable only by pedestrians could do the same amount of work for the community that the consultant that you were originally considering running seminars and activities could do? Custer's Indian War atrocities are not up for too much debate. We've gone over those details exhaustively for over a year. But his actions after the Civil War, campaigning with President Johnson during the swing around the circle campaign, which pardoned and appointed Confederate officers and vetoed civil rights legislation, kind of puts a damper on some of the celebration that we have for Custer as some sort of savior of Black people at the time. And I understand, you know, nowadays we think of things differently, but it doesn't matter. Do you really think that a plaque could not only explain this nuance with the appropriate gravitas? And do you think it will make Black, Indigenous, and people of color feel safer living in Monroe if it remains in its place of honor? Yes, they have the concentration camps up, but they didn't move them to the middle of the city, they didn't erect statues to Hitler, and they didn't build new ones for entertainment purposes. I saw that the Proud Boys, labeled as an extremist group by the FBI, a terrorist group by Canada, and deemed a hate group by SPLC, was at the Monroe County Fair and seemed to be pretty welcomed by the people of Monroe. Folks who still claim that the election was stolen, who wrote, root for a president who actively egged on violence towards his opposition and who ignored the severity of the kidnapping attempt on our governor, are prolific through our city. I don't think Brown, Black, Native, Disabled, Gay, Transgender people, I don't think that we feel like this is a safe or welcoming city. If you were a Black, Gay, or Transgender, or Disabled person living in Monroe, would you feel safe in a far-right Proud Boys town? I don't think so. I know you might not be able to put yourself in someone else's shoes, but I challenge you to try. Removing the Custer statue will not fix our problems, but it's a start. Hiring the facilitator, which we just wanted more transparency on, was a start to correcting the Custer narrative. You can't win a race if you don't start. It would take decades to change people's minds about Custer because they haven't heard the whole story. I'm asking you to make this world a better place than where you, where you started, what you came into. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from those present here this evening? Yes?
Katie Beth Davis, Le Pleasant Road, Monroe, Michigan. What's that?
Township.
Oh, Monroe Township, I'm sorry. Le Pleasant Road, Monroe Charter Township.
That's correct.
Just wanted to say, we started off this meeting saying the Pledge of Allegiance, one nation under God. The whole time I've grown up learning about God, reading the Bible, going to Catholic school, going to a Catholic church, General Custer is everything that we learned not to be. We learned about false idols, having statues of idolatry. Again, right across the street from a church. Before this meeting, in the work session, you guys were discussing your American Rescue Plan Act, which 11.5 million dollars is awarded to the city of Monroe. This is including park improvements. 11.5 million dollars that was given to the city by Joe Biden and the Democratic government that we have right now. So I'm suggesting that that money be used and not anybody's tax dollars. But all across the United States, statues been being moved, schools have been being renamed. This is the time. Everything happens for a reason. And I am letting you guys know right now, I'm only 37 years old. I have nothing but time, resources, and energy. I will come here to every single meeting, just like I have for the last year and a half, and I will stand up here and take my three minutes, just like I have at every single meeting. The other thing I wanted to mention is, I had asked Vince, I had asked Mr. Past to during this process, I have other petitions, one for the Custer Road, Custer Airport, other Custer things around the city. I asked him if I needed to go through the same process to do every single other petition that I have. I heard somebody say, oh, Jesus. Okay, so as you know.
Katie Beth, one second. You know, there's, there's, everybody has an opportunity to speak. We don't need conversation in the back. I monitor time. I know when three minutes will be up. I don't need to be told how to keep time. Please be respectful for anybody that's speaking here this evening. Thank you. Katie Beth, please continue.
And Vince wrote me, Ms. Davis. As you know, the city released two weeks ago a request for qualifications, RFQ, for Community Engagement Facilitation Project in relation to the Custer Monument. While the RFQ references the monument, the core issue is Custer. My feeling is the RFQ can address the Custer Monument along with the naming associated with the airport, streets, and her programs. So I'm asking, am I gonna have to go through individually and submit every petition? Are we gonna go through this with every single thing that I'm gonna bring here? And if we're gonna end the RFQ tonight, can anybody go on the record and promise that something is gonna be done about the statue? That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Thanks, Katie Beth. Other comments from those present here this evening? Mr. Mika, you've spoken. You've spoken. Haven't you, have you spoken once? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, oh, it was, I'm sorry. Sorry.
It looks like I speak all the time.
Mr. Mika, please start, and I'll start your time, and you have to give your name. I apologize.
Well, Your Honor and respected council members, I am Richard Mika. I reside in the city of Monroe. I come before you to recite an old tale, literally, Taking a Tiger by the Tail. The Custer Dilemma has been adjudicated relentlessly for over 100 years. Hundreds of books, thousands of articles have been written on the subject, some pro, some con. The debate goes on to this very day and will continue to do so far into the future. You, the city council, have been implicated in this process to no avail. No matter what you do or who, or who you do it with, really matters. It, it is time for you to step aside and to put the community at rest. The turmoil over manifest destiny is not likely to ever subside entirely. But as a community, we have survived infinitely more difficult times from the Great Depression and world wars. This is nothing but a tempest in a teapot, and you would best avoid taking the tiger by the tail.
Thank you, Mr. Mika. I apologize. I'm getting confused. Other comments from those present here this evening? Yes, ma'am. Name, address, of jurisdiction of residence.
Nancy Behren. I live in the city of Monroe. I'm not here as a historian, I'm here as a citizen. My family has lived here for over 200 years. And Custer has been a part of this city. Are you gonna tear down the signs, tear down the statue, blow up the farm, dig up the Custers in the cemetery? Where does this end? Custer is a part of this community and will always be, regardless of how you feel about him. He's had a great impact on this city.
Other comments from those present here this evening? Yes, sir.
Councilman and the city council. My name is Patrick Leibold. I live on Arbor Avenue, Monroe, Michigan. I've been here for 75 years. I'm married and had a business in Monroe called Monroe Frozen Foods. I've worked with the city and the county, the agricultural departments, selling food, promoting businesses, restaurants, bars, and the schools. I sold fish to Custer's schools, school systems. I've sold fish to Monroe Public Schools. I've sold french fries. Anyways, my life was Monroe, okay? And when you tear down the statue, or move it, or put it in a barn, you're tearing my right shoulder off and my left shoulder because I worked for Monroe. And some of you, other people have worked for Monroe. I was awarded by surprise when I was given an award, the Patriot Award, because I stood up about the Muskrat fiasco back in the late 90s. What a fiasco that was. Things happen, and the city of Monroe is still here, and Muskrat is still available at the boat clubs in Monroe County, okay? So we're gonna go work, we're gonna work our way through this, but I think the $50,000 would be good if we spent it on educating the people in the county, in the city, in the townships, in the schools about Custer and all of his deeds that he has done. And I think Custer statue should be where it is. And if anybody wants to move it, they can pay to have the thing moved. And don't use my tax dollars or Biden's tax dollars to move our statue, which is fine, right where it is. There's plenty, I won't go there. It looks really nice where it is. My comment is ended. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other comments present this evening? Yes, ma'am? Yes? Name, address, jurisdiction where you reside?
I'll limp along. Good evening, Your Honor, members of council. Jeanne Mika, thank you for the privilege of hearing before you. I'm not fortunate enough to be from Monroe. I do come from a long line of military officers since before the American Revolution, even in England. And the one thing that I've learned, as a dependent, how difficult it is to be in a leadership role. You people know that, you are too. And when a man is a military officer, regardless of the branch of service, or what battle he may be in, the situation is the same. Buck stops there, and it's tough. The Battle of the Little Big Horn was a difficult thing to have happened. It's too bad that it happened in many ways, and many lives were lost, and every life is valuable. But Custer himself was only following orders. You need to remember that. And he honored the Native Americans and took up for them before the United States Congress, as you know. And this statue is only a piece of bronze that represents a moment in time. And rather than have a terrific battle over something that's been here, and a part of our very fabric here, I would suggest perhaps these people that have a very big battle going, and I honor that...
Mika?
But consider doing something to honor a Native American that did something here, rather than do this, and balance the score. Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mika. Other comments from those present here this evening? Other comments? I see no further comments. This time, comments will conclude. Just coming back to the item that's on before council, the council action. Clerk, do you wanna read that, please, and then we'll...
Yes, we're considering Item 3226 under Council Action, Resolution to Terminate Custer Monument Community Engagement Facilitation Project, and I have that, that motion was made on that by Brian Lemoore and seconded by Councilperson Jermaine.
That's correct.
Your Honor, clarification?
Yes.
The resolution states that we're gonna terminate facilitation, but the resolution also states that the city of Monroe will not use general fund money to either relocate or remove the statue. So that's a, that's a second part of the resolution.
Well, I was gonna say, that's correct, that's what I have, that's the resolution, which is in the packet, which council has, which was posted with the packets online.
Yeah, what I read to you is merely the title that was given to it, but yes, the packet online contains that line of the resolution.
That's, okay.
Your Honor, I'll call the question.
Okay, there's a motion, a second, questions have been called. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson E. Colangelo?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Jermaine?
Yes.
Lemoore?
Yes.
Felder?
No.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
I have no further items.
Council comments, it is August. Councilwoman E. Colangelo, you start.
Thanks, Your Honor. I just have two, and they're primarily maintenance issues for the city manager. The first one is, having been out to the visitor's center, I noticed that the median on Dixie Highway, the landscaping is in terrible condition. Since that's kind of like the gateway to the national park, and we have a lot of visitors that are coming in from out of town, that area should be probably one of the nicer-looking areas comparable to what's over at Memorial Park on South Monroe Street. So, I would ask that city administrative staff take a look at that. The other issue is, I noticed that construction is starting on the LET transfer station. I noticed that on East First Street, the brick wall that has been used probably for over a decade as a seating area for people waiting for the bus, is in extremely bad condition, to the point where the rebar is actually sticking through the brick, and I want to know if that's gonna be fixed as part of this project.
I don't, if I may, Your Honor, just, I'm not sure if it is part of the scope in there. I know we've looked at that wall with other projects in the past, and I'll take a look at its condition here tomorrow.
And my last request is, I know that we've been discussing ARPA money. I would request that we reserve some of that funds. And I'll just throw a number out for the city administration, at least $200,000, to help reforest the city. We've taken out a lot of trees in our neighborhoods, we haven't put them back. I think this is an opportunity to reforest part of the community, and beautify it at the same time. So, Your Honor, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilwoman Vining.
Yes, Your Honor, I wanted to report to Parks and Recs that there's a bee problem at the Labor Park. The best we can come up with is that it's in the pavilion area, so I was hoping that that could be taken a look at. Also, the alley adjacent to the Town Square Market between Kentucky and Winchester, and Third and Fourth Streets, is in horrible disrepair. I know it's a frequently-used alley, and I wanted to ask DPS about grading that alley. I know they're doing some grading now, and I don't know if they skipped that one, or if they intended to.
It's between Winchester and...
Kentucky and Third and Fourth. Yeah, there's very large holes through the length of the alley, and that alley is also access to at least three or four homes. So, I just wanted to make that clear. As far as the Custer statue, I know it's been said that the council, it's been said a few times that the council didn't want to come down on one side, so I just wanted to reiterate from the very beginning that I've never had an issue with the statue being moved away from the center of the city. But I also stated in the beginning that this community is not ready for something like that, and that if, even if we did take the statue down, the reputation that we have here in the city, and the mindset of a lot of the people, wouldn't change with the statue moving. But I just wanted to reiterate that I've been a proponent of the statue being moved from the beginning, just because I know of the pain and frustration that it causes certain people. But I also know that the majority of the people do not feel or understand any of that, and do not wish to understand it. I just wanted to reiterate that from the beginning. So it's, it's not the entire council who did not want to take a stand. I didn't feel like spending $50,000 was necess, potentially spending $50,000 was necessarily the way to go, because I also believe that we should have made a decision as a council as to what we were going to do as far as the statue. That's all. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jermaine.
Thank you, Your Honor. I wanted to put out there why I seconded the motion for the resolution. I think as a council, we are perfectly qualified to render a decision on the Custer statue with no outside facilitator or guidance. We're a fair council, and I think we can render a decision that's fair, and everybody, I don't think everyone will be happy with, but a good and fair decision, and the right decision. Thank you, Your Honor.
Councilwoman Lemoore?
Thank you, Your Honor. First, I'd like to send out my sympathies to the family of the Monroe Township firefighter who lost his life in a boning accident yesterday. He was a 10-year veteran there, a lieutenant. I am certain that he was probably involved in many situations here in Monroe with mutual aid. Just want to let that family know that we appreciate his service here, and he has our deepest sympathies. And that's all, Your Honor.
Councilwoman Felder?
Thank you, Your Honor. It's certainly always a loss for the community when there's, when someone passes who's in a position of public service like that, so I'd like to echo Councilwoman Lemoore's comments. Recently, we also lost another gentleman, Senator Carl Levin, who was an advocate for Michigan for many, many years. That sort of public service is hard to find anymore. That level of statesmanship is certainly a rare thing. Hopefully, we're able to come up with a little bit more of it between our neighborhoods and communities, but he will certainly be missed. Veterans Day at the fair today, I was lucky enough to be able to make it out there with my family. I hope all of you were too, and if you're not, I hope you're able to get out to the fair at some point this week. Certainly nice to see all the men and women in uniform who have served our country so valiantly, and then walk around with their, the ribbons on their chests representing who they are and what they've done. Flood relief also has become an issue recently in several neighborhoods and apartment complexes throughout the city. I have been in communication with city administration and staff as to the resources that we are dedicating to that, particularly the St. Mary's Garden storm sewers. And then I spent about five hours on the phone with local nonprofits in terms of putting together a package of relief resources that they have towards that end. So, if there is a need, if there is damage, feel free to contact me. I think you can find my information online. I try and make myself readily available. I'll, I'll see that you try and get the support that you need. Lastly, on the issue this evening, on the action item, the only action item there was on the agenda, I saw it as an issue of process. It wasn't a, you know, Custer's good, Custer's bad conversation. This was the conversation that would allow us to have that conversation. I'd certainly like to have heard comments regarding, you know, whether the public feels the process that was in place and the facilitation that was in place was palatable or not. I know there's been some frustrations with the process in the past, and I think that the presence here this evening from the community says that there might have been some misunderstanding as to that frustration. And to do away with the whole thing without having anything in place doesn't allow for the conversation to be had, and I think it's a conversation worth having. That was, I think, the singular point that I made from the beginning of this process, was that this is, this is a conversation that this community needs to have, even if Custer's not a part of that conversation. So, you know, there's, there's obviously members of both camps here, there's members, you know, there's members of the community that feel both ways about this issue, and I think that we should give them an opportunity to speak in some public forum on that. You know, whether or not that's council, I mean, if, if, if an independent third-party facilitator who is ostensibly neutral is not gonna be a legitimate, seen as a legitimate solution, I don't know how on earth council can be seen as legitimate with whatever we come up. So maybe there's another alternative that needs to be looked at. But to abandon the one process that we have in place to have this community discussion, and then not replace it with anything, I think sort of leaves the community hanging. And that's sort of an explanation of why I voted the way I did this evening. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments, I'll start with the American Recovery Funds that were mentioned a few times this evening. The, there was a work session prior to this, in which Mr. Sell, our finance director, put out several, a PowerPoint, several slides of information about that, what that entails, that can be found on the city's website, as well as, it'll come through YouTube if so wished. And it'll be available through the clerk's office and how to get through that presentation. But the, the part of that is, is the money, which is, the city did receive, or is receiving, half has been received, is $11.4 million. And how do you spend that $11.4 million? There's a discussion that the council's having, there's many projects, but there are also limitations of what it can and cannot be used for. So I, if there's those that have interest, I'd suggest you watch the work session, see the slides, see the information, and understand what that is, because that's where the council goes next on deliberation of what those, what those funds may be spent on. I guess the, one of the, I guess there's a plus to that, is it's, it's a timeframe of two to four years before you have to finalize that, so there's plenty of opportunity to make sure that we're using the funds logistically correct, because there's other funds that are coming, whether it be the, as I know Councilwoman E. Colangelo mentioned at the meeting, the work session, was the transportation funds that are coming. Doesn't make sense to spend these funds if there's transportation funds, just as we've received the Michigan Department Natural Resources Trush Fund, which assisted with the development around the battlefield. And if those funds are available for certain park improvements, then those funds should be used there. So trying to manage and utilize the greatest funds possible for the greatest impact within our community, and make, as we all say, the transformative difference that could occur, depending what those may be. So, there'll be time, and we'll start those discussions. You know, I guess I'll make a final comment regarding the Custer Monument. I think as we went through this, and then there was presented to council in the discussion, and people that were coming to make comments, it was recognized that there was a broader discussion, even outside Monroe on this topic, whether it be regional, whether it be countrywide, and how, and items that are being discussed across our, our, our country. But when it come time to make the facilitation and the council support for the RFQ and send it out, there was support to do so because we saw benefit of having a third-party neutral facilitator. Unfortunately, in my opinion, the conversation got off track, and it continued to be about simply removal, or replacement, or a museum, can't see it, as well as those, it should only be there for the one reason it's stated. I'll say what I've said many times before. We know that the monument was given to the city of Monroe, and it was given for our care of what we do for and with that monument, and that was in 1910. But as the conversation continues over the decades, other items get placed around the monument that tells a broader story, other than the Battle of Gettysburg. And so I think as a community, when we start to expand what that information is, then we have to be willing to embrace all the conversation. I said that earlier in my comments, and how I believe the National Parks philosophy is, and I think it's the philosophy that should be done here. So if we want to expand beyond it being one point in time during the Battle of Gettysburg, about why the monument is there, and we put other items on there about his, other parts of his career, that maybe not be as palatable for some, then we have to be willing to tell that story as well. And, you know, I know there's a couple of comments this evening about what the duties and responsibilities of council are, but also one of those duties and responsibilities is just by looking in the book and saying, this is what we do, and this is our responsibilities, is listening to the community. Whoever that is that steps to this podium with their three minutes to listen and understand whether it's something we should do, or we should not do, in the process we go along. Unfortunately, in this time of the process, it got off track, and I think it got to the point where all it was around was not the, it was too frequently looked at as, well, it's not gonna do this, or it's not gonna do that. And if we don't have the support to move forward, and that's one of the reasons why I voted the way I did, then we need to come back and revisit how we do that. And while the resolution doesn't state what the next steps are, then are you voting because you don't want to take the resolution? Or are you voting because you don't want the next steps? I think sometimes you have to take one thing at a time, and then regroup and see where we're going to go from here. So, I'll just stop there with my comments this evening. Clerk Treasurer LaVoy?
Yes, I just wanted to mention that there are some fabulous summer camps happening at the, at the Opportunity Center at ALCC, and I had the good fortune to be able to stop in last week and spend some time with the children at the art camp. Amy Arnold and Betsy Leavens, and some other students helped facilitate that, and it was, it was just fantastic, and it was pure joy on all of their faces as they were creating. And, and they had an art show at the end, and Councilwoman Vining probably is more aware of some of the other programs that are happening, but it's been, it's been very successful, and it's, it's a really great opportunity, and I just want to applaud everyone who's involved with that, and the, and the leaders who spent their, volunteered their time and spent their time there. It was really great. Other than that, it's just a reminder that the city tax due date was June 30th, so if you have, if you have questions, if you haven't paid, and you have questions about it, call the clerk treasurer's office, we can give you the updated total with a penalty, and those can be paid continuously now through, up till December tax time, where they will be rolled onto the December taxes. So I just, some, some folks sometimes have some questions about what their actual amount due is at this point, and they really need to contact our office, and either, or go online and look up your account, and, and we can help you with that as well. So that's all I have.
Thank you. City manager Pastu, comments this evening?
I have none tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is citizens' comments, and so at the end of each meeting... Thank you. Next on the agenda is citizens' comments. And so at the end of each meeting, there's opportunity for those present here this evening, if they wish to make comments or announcements or items that they think is pertinent and important for not only the council but the community. And of course, mindful of the rules of the chamber, of course, you have three minutes, and, and please speak to the, the council here through me. Any comments from those present here this evening that wish to make comments? Yes, sir. In the back, please come forward, and please state your name and your jurisdiction of residence. Thank you.
My name's Patrick Mendez. I live over in the city of Monroe, off of Jerome Street. I come to you, forgive me, it's first time speaking amongst you all. Nice to see you.
Take your time.
But the city attorney had penned a letter to the township regarding the township's marijuana business locations. The issue I have is the city's inactions regarding the marijuana, which is now a legal product, and that inaction is pretty much the same as the inaction of the Custer issue going on now. It is a legal product. It is enjoyed by adults. If you look around at communities that have gotten it, that have received, allowed businesses, they got a major windfall from the state thanks to the tax, taxes on, on the product. A friend of mine in Monroe on the city council was bragging that his, his city received a couple hundred thousand dollars, and he started posting pictures of all the projects that were done with the marijuana money, rebuilding sidewalks, adding handicap sidewalk accessibility. You're, you're looking right now at the ARP funds. That's a one-time deal. We're talking if it's the same every year, $28,000 per business could come back to the city if the city council would allow a business to open up. I know there's been a lot of discussion regarding, you know, what's, what's it going to take, you know, how's it going to affect the city. Marijuana is already in the city. Whether people buy it illegally, which I don't condone, or they go to another city, give them their tax money, and therefore they get a portion of that back. Ann Arbor, a bustling city, that's where I've been several times, received tons of money. The facilities there are excellent. If you go in there and talk to them, there, there's no major crime or, or shady business. I, I just wish the council would take up the marijuana issue a little bit faster so that the city can start receiving more of the funds. And that's all I have.
Pat, thank you for the comments. I'll, I'll save comments for that, a future item. And I think there's some information that needs to be disseminated, which we'll talk with the manager about that. Thank you. Other comments from those present here this evening? Name and jurisdiction of residence, please.
Yeah, my name's Rick Brown, and I live in Frenchtown. And on July 29, I got a phone call from the water department saying they had shut off the water on one of my duplexes for de-liquid of water bill. So I had, after the tenant called me because neither tenant residency had water, the water department told me I had to contact the building department. Building department said if I didn't schedule an inspection, they was not going to turn the water back on. I had no notification of inspection, didn't know when it was going to start, and they didn't even just shut it off on the lower unit, they shut it up on, off on the upper unit, which was caught up under water bill. It's like, how did this happen? Why wasn't we getting some notification that the inspection was going to start without shutting off water on both of my tenants? So I had to call the building department, then I had to call the clerk to get verification that I paid for the stuff, then I had to call the water department again to get it turned on both units, and then I had to call the units, the renters, and then apologize for the city's lack of notification. I don't know what happened here.
Okay, so I understand by this, the duplex is in the city, of course.
It's on, Mr. Pastu.
Okay, very good. I'm looking at Mr. Pastu to make sure we have follow-up. I'll find, I should say, Mr. Pastu a follow-up and track back to the department you said to find out how it started and how it concluded and what happened in the middle.
Well, are the rental inspections starting back up again? So shouldn't we get notices of that before you go into shutting water off?
We've been sending notices out, so let me, just give me your address, and I can follow up on it.
2703 Nettle Road. I got a letter from the thing-
No, no, I meant the, the property in town.
Oh, 639 Michigan Avenue.
Okay, 639, okay.
But I got a letter on the invoice from the city inspection that afternoon, but it doesn't mention anything about shutting the water off on the people. I thought you couldn't do that.
Mr. Pastu will look into it and find out, and that we, and maybe if even-
I'd appreciate it. Your phone number or something, or call me or something, because, yeah, I, I gotta explain that to my tenants.
Go to contact number, make sure you get contacted.
I should let him know my contact number?
Yeah, if you want to walk over and tell him what it is.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Rich. Other comments from those present here this evening? Citizens' comments. Any further comments this evening?
2657.
Seeing none, a motion would be in order.
Your name is?
Okay.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Lemoore, supported by Councilwoman Jermaine to adjourn. Clerk, please call the roll.
Personico Anjali?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Jermaine?
Yes.
Lemoore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
And thank you all for being here and your comments as always.